Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. So nice to have you all here with us in the council chambers, or if you're watching at home on TV six, or if you're watching us streaming on Facebook. We're glad to have you with us tonight. We'll start our meeting this morning, this evening, with a introductions by our town council.
Good evening and Merry Christmas. I'm Jane Welch.
And David Smitherman.
Hi all, I'm Jean Marie Foster.
I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
Happy Thursday, I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
Very good. We'll have our invocation led by Bo Half, our attorney. This will be his last leading of us of our invocation. And that'll be followed by pledge of allegiance led by councilwoman Melissa Hunt. If you'll stand and join us if you're able.
Let us pray. God, our Father, you are the maker of every good and perfect gift. All that we are and all that we have belongs to you. Give you thanks this, this time for this special season of the year. And we give you thanks tonight for this town, for its council, for the staff who makes things run, but mostly for the citizens whom we all serve. Be with us during this meeting. Give us wisdom, give us courage to do the things that need to be done this evening. And then as we leave to go home, take us home in safety. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, have there been any additions to our agenda since it was mailed out?
Yes.
Very good. What a surprise. So council members with that will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Council members, there is a reminder here, we have, we have been trying to improve the audio quality on TV six. And to do that, I've been instructed to share some secrets on how to use the microphones. Just remember that the red light that appears on the microphone itself means the microphone is on. Ignore the directions in front of you, they're wrong. So red is on, if it's on, you're going to be heard. If not, if you don't want to be heard, press the button and it'll mute the button. When you're speaking, I won't do it, but try not to get right up on top of the microphone because you'll overmodulate and it'll be hard to understand. So a good distance when you talk, if you don't want to be heard, press the button. If you want to be heard, leave it off. There'll be a test at the end of the meeting. Very good. James, will you please go through our consent agenda for this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda has multiple items on it. First is Resolution 2022-066. These are the financial statements for the four months ended October 31st, 2022. Number B, this is approval of closed session minutes from October 6th, 2022. C would be approval of agenda briefing minutes, November 3rd, 2022. D would be the approval of closed session minutes from November 3rd, 2022. E would be the approval of regular meeting minutes, November 10th, 2022. F would be Resolution 2022-067. That's accepting the resignation of Jennifer Hayden from the Lewisville Unification Committee. And last but not least, G is the revised 2023 meeting schedule. And that, Mr. Mayor, is the consent agenda for this evening.
Very good, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. Any council member is welcome to pull one off for individual discussion, otherwise we take them as a group. Question I always ask our finance director, are there any surprises this month?
Uh, no.
Surprises, she says with a big nod and a grin. If not, council members will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Was it Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Who made the second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. We are so pleased when we have visitors come to our Lewisville Town Councils, particularly this evening, with two particularly distinguished visitors. First, Patricia McManus, the, the, you are the superintendent of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System. Very good. It's always great that you're here. And we also have school board, school board chairman, Deanna Kaplan, who's with us this evening. We are very pleased to have you with us and honored by your presence. Trish, I think you have a little bit of presentation for us tonight. Please come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Am I talking okay online?
I'm assuming you're good, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here and thank you so much to our board chair, Deanna Kaplan, for being here as well tonight. But it's nice to meet all of you and to join you at, this is my first visit, to your council meeting and I thank you for a few minutes. The purpose of my visit is really just to share a little bit about how the schools in Lewisville, kind of like the state of the schools with data that I'm going to share with you. The schools that are directly in Lewisville, but also those that are like theaters into Lewisville. And so I'm going to be just sharing some updates with you. And I think you all know how incredible your schools are in this area, so I'm going to share some data with you this evening. And also a little bit of district-wide data as well. So you've got the slide deck and I'll go quick, pretty quickly through some of these slides, but this is just our mission and vision of our school district. And so the bolded words kind of are really what we're about. And then our vision of excellence, collaboration, and inclusiveness. So we can turn, we've got five goals that we are working toward that make up our strategic plan. And so you can see all five of those, but it really is honestly to raise achievement and close any gaps between different groups of students, to ensure equal access and equitable access to quality instruction, eliminating any barriers that might exist. And then goal three is about building and strengthening our partnerships. And that's one of the reasons I'm getting out to all of our different communities is because, just to talk about ways we can strengthen our work together. Goal four is about our workforce. Just like any other employer, we cannot do anything for our students without a high-quality workforce, so that's another goal. And then five is about safety and inclusive and a culture in every school that values the well-being of all of our students. And so those are our goals. And so just a little bit about our data, I'm only, we have tons of data, but for tonight's purposes, I'm sharing basically three key data points. This was, is about, one will be about third grade reading. That's one of our key goals. You've probably heard about 90 by 25, which is trying to get all of our third graders reading on grade level by 2025, or at least 90% of them. And then 90% of eighth graders honor both grade level by 2025, and then a graduation rate of 90% by 2025. So those are three main goals of all the goals that we have in our district. And if you look, I'm going to start with third grade reading. So you can see in 2018, 19, that was the last year before the pandemic, that, those were where the scores were as a whole in third grade. It's broken down by all students, which is the 51.7 if you look back at 2018, 19, and then it breaks it down into three of our racial subgroups. If you look in 2021, we did not test in 2019, 20. That was the year that we all kind of shut down at that time, and that year we did not test. So 2021 was the year before last, and that is when we were part virtual, just taking you down memory lane, I'm sure everybody remembers, part virtual, most of the big school year virtual, and then coming back in pieces that year. And so the data took a dip. And then last year is 21, 22. And so the data is starting to slowly increase again. We've got a lot of work to do post-pandemic to recover from the pandemic, but based on some of the data you're going to see, we're on that path to recovery. So that's third grade. Now I'm going to show you the schools in Lewisville. So we have Lewisville and Vienna. And so you can see, thinking compared to where we were of our averages, Lewisville and Vienna are both outperforming district averages by quite a bit. So you can see at Lewisville, 61.4% of third graders were reading on grade level in last school year's data, and in Vienna, 69.3%. So extremely outperforming the district, and honestly, outperforming many schools across the state, actually. If we go then to the eighth grade data, same type of thing, we took the dip after the pandemic and we're starting to, it's pretty, it's pretty similar, but we're starting to move in the right direction. And so if you look at the eighth grade of Lewisville Middle School, 62% of eighth graders were on level, again, above the district averages. Going to the next one is our graduation rate. So our goal is 90% graduation rate. If you look at where we've been the last three years, we actually really did not take a dip in graduation rate, which is pretty incredible with all the challenges that our kids have faced. But in 2020, we had 85.8, in 21, 85.5, and in 22, 85.4. So again, our goal is to get to 90%. So our high schools that we're including in this for you are Reagan and West. And so you can see they're above the goal of our district, both of those schools. So impressive work there. We're going to look then to our other, some other tests, biology, English II, Math I and Math III. These are all high school scores. So you can see for both, Reagan is on the left, is on one side, West is on the other. You can see both of those are, they have really high scores in both. The lowest scores are in Math I, and we've seen that. And I will tell you as well, math teacher, we have really a shortage even today of math teachers. And so part of me being here today is also plugging, if anybody wants to come teach math, we would love to have you. But you could see those math scores are, and those were, you know, post-pandemic, which says a lot about how kids learn and they need to be in their classrooms with their teacher. So that's the data, but it's moving up. And so the next slide shows Reagan and West again, and it's showing the, those biology, English II, Math I and Math III, just a different way to show it than just percentages. So again, you can see math is the area that we are working on in both places. All right? All of our schools get growth ratings, and so you can either not meet growth, meet growth, or exceed growth. And the way these growth measures are calculated at the state are comparing similar schools to other schools in the state. And so to exceed growth means you are actually doing better than schools that have a similar demographic makeup as your school. And so to exceed growth is awesome. We want all of our schools exceeding growth. But to meet growth also means that you are, your kids are all getting a year's worth of growth. Exceeding means they're going beyond that, pretty much. So you can see Lewisville Elementary and Middle and Reagan last year all exceeded growth, and Vienna and West met growth. So there are no schools in this report that did not meet growth. So exciting news. Next slide, also, these are some kind of highlights from our data. Lewisville Elementary had a 27-point percentage point increase in third through eighth grade math scores. So that was, that's incredible. 27% increase in one year from, from the school year before last to last school year. Reagan had a 16% increase in Math I scores. When many schools went down in Math I, Reagan actually went up 16 percentage points. And West Forsyth went up 15 percentage points in biology. So these are highlights that, you know, even through challenging times, because last year, if you remember, although we were back in school, last year, anybody that got COVID was out for 10 days. And that included teachers, students, it was a really, even though everyone thought, oh, good, we're back at school, it's not going to be as challenging, from what our educators all said, it was even more challenging last year. So for these schools to get that great growth in one year is really exciting. And then the next slide is just, the last part of this is a little bit about the district and how we're going to continue moving forward. So the first part is about our vision of 90 by 25, and it's how we're approaching literacy in all of our schools. And so this just kind of shows that we are focused on, if you go to the next slide, I'll tell you a little bit about more what we're doing. We've got actually new curriculum in all of our reading classrooms. We have new classroom libraries with amazing relevant texts for all of our students. And we gave to every one of our K through five classrooms, and six through eight will be getting their classroom libraries in January. Goal of that was to get literature in the books of every hand, and books in the hands of our kids. With that, why that's important, if you think about how you get better at anything, it's by doing it. And so if you're going to become a great reader, people that read a lot are better readers, their vocabulary is expanded. And so we want great books in the hands of our kids. But we also have this reading warriors program happening in our elementary schools, and those are 17 prioritized schools. It is not in the two schools, Vienna and Lewisville Elementary, because they are not in this group of 17 prioritized schools. But our schools that are the furthest away from meeting that 90 by 25 have reading tutors that are in their schools. I think, are you one of the reading tutors? I've got, I've got two, a reading warrior, I've got two board members that are, that go into schools weekly to provide this reading tutor. We have like 80 or more community volunteers that go in and do that tutoring every week. So we've got great reading programs, great books in the hands of kids. All of our teachers have been going through letters training, which is a training on how to teach reading. It's a state training, we are the first cohort. So we are excited about the direction we're heading in literacy. Next. Climate and culture is our other big focus. I'm sure that you all may have heard about our rewriting of our code of character conduct and support. What this simply says is that we've got to make sure that our schools are places where kids want to be and kids want to learn, and that they feel valued, they feel part of the culture of the school. And so that new rewriting of the code is honestly to be focused on inclusionary practices, restorative practices, social emotional learning, which is really about how do we teach kids to collaborate and to share and to show empathy toward each other, skills that we need as human beings. And so all of these things, we have student services, we hired more social workers, we hired 30 more social workers in our schools this year, which is more than we've ever had. And we have graduation coaches in all of our high schools to support students that might have gone off track to graduating. We've got more after-school programs and field trips than we have before. A lot of this was paid for through our ESAR dollars, which will go away in 2024, so we're also working now on sustainability plans for all of the things that are working. If you turn to the next one, we are very focused on our workforce, and basically professional development is a huge part of that, our wages. We've done a lot with bonus structures over the last two years to retain our teachers. And plus, we also work to increase our supplements so that we are competitive. I think right now we are 10th highest, I think it's about 10th in the state of our teacher salary. We want to be number one, so that's, that's the goal, we'll keep pushing forward, toward. And then we've got a lot of great partnerships with our local colleges to get more teachers into our, into our school district, more teachers into our educator prep programs and then into our district. We are expanding our own local teacher cadet programs. We're trying to do more with grow our own. So some of our high schools already have teacher cadet programs where kids that might be interested in teaching, it's just like those that might be interested in other professions, we've got to grow our own and get them hooked early. And so we're doing a lot more with that. So we've got a lot going on, on getting our workforce strengthened. And then I think there's one or, oh, these are staffing resources that were provided to schools last year. Some of these titles won't mean that much to you, but this slide is just to say, we have invested in our schools in providing support for our teachers and our students. So these are just more resources we added to our schools this school year with our ESAR plans. I think that is it. So I'll open it up for questions if you have any.
Council members?
I have a question. Thanks for the presentation. Can you talk a little bit about collaboration between school system and community college?
Yes, we have a very strong partnership with Forsyth Tech. Not only with like dual enrollment opportunities for students to be, you know, many of them can get their AA or at least get credit for a college while they're in school, but also through many of our CTE programs, we've got a partnership. We've expanded programs at Carver High School specifically to work with Forsyth Tech. But again, we are at the table regularly with Dr. Spriggs and her staff to strengthen the partnership in getting kids straight into, into the community college. Because for many, that will be a success story for them. The class sizes are smaller, they can already start taking classes when they're in high school and then go on. And also they, even with our teaching program, they've actually expanded their teacher prep program at Forsyth Tech. They've also, they've also expanded their early childhood program. So we're also looking for pre-K teachers, and so we're working closely with Forsyth Tech. So very closely. They're the main one, though, that, that we work with as far as community colleges. For four-year colleges, we work closely with Winston-Salem State, Salem College, and with Wake, Wake Forest University, all those right here in our backyard.
Is there a target, or you all, have you all identified a target for moving those kids through that sort of, where you talked about early college, or where they can get their associate's degrees, get college credits? Is there, is there a goal established within the school system to get X number of kids into those programs, or no?
Yes, so, and I'll, and I'll tell you, up until now, we have not sent nearly those that we can. And in our partnership with Forsyth Tech, Dr. Spriggs has, when we met two years ago when I first started, she said, we're not taking nearly enough advantage of dual enrollment.
Right.
And so we have started increasing, yes. And so we have set goals with our strategic plan, increasing those numbers every year. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but it's part of our strategic plan. We have lots of other metrics that we're tracking. I just showed you a few, but increasing dual enrollment is one of those. And I mean, my goal would be that every student that takes college classes in high school, when they're capable, they don't know they're capable, not all. And then the important target is that we provide supports, like push more into it and then provide supports because, and the college has those supports. They work with students that may need, you know, may need more to be successful in college courses. But yeah, it is, I tell you, parents would love it too, because they will have way less tuition to pay for college. So we, yes, one of our goals is to increase those numbers.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly appreciate you commenting and sharing these statistics. Can you speak to how Forsyth County school systems compare statewide?
So I'm just trying to recall, no, I'm just trying to add, you know, off my head, I don't, I don't know the background person, so I was trying to even, as far as this school's data, when you all got our data this year, many more districts, and I hate to go to the negative, which I have data on, I'll be, or the, on the positive side, but more districts became local forming because of more schools becoming local forming, we did not as a system. I was very excited about that, and not that I love our data, because it's not where it needs to be at all, post-pandemic. We've got a lot, I don't think it was where it needed to be pre-pandemic, to be honest with you, but now post, we've got a lot of more work to do. But we are, we basically, when you look at compares to the large districts, because that's usually who we try to compare to, Wake and Charlotte and Guilford, which is very close, we are usually, probably, when you look at the rankings from the large, large districts, probably about third or fourth when you look at our data, many times neck and neck with Guilford. So as a very competitive person, by nature and by nurture, I will tell you that we are, my goal is to get us to the top of that list. But we're, yeah, so we're basically neck and neck many times with Guilford. I think Wake usually outperforms us, so again, pushing up to Wake and the other one, oh gosh, let me make sure I get this right, Chapel Hill, Carver, outperforms us many times. And then we come on this year, it's incredible as well. So I think we usually fall like fourth in the ranking of the large districts. I don't, we usually don't compare even though to some of the smaller districts with very few schools, just because we're very different than many of those districts. But we still are tracking those. I'm part of a superintendent group that meets with E-Tech, which is kind of a tri-state area, and then I'm part of the large superintendent group that meets with all the larger, with middle school districts. And so that's who we usually are compared to. So we're holding around, but until we're like at the top, we're at least satisfied.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for what you've done and what you're continuing to do and what all of you do. It's, what, what can we do as an elected body, either as a body or as individuals, to support the goals you outlined?
I think it's, I really believe that it's just continuing to be involved in the schools, that especially those that, obviously those that are influential, that, you know, doing different things. I know when I think about different councils, there are many different ways folks can involve, do either grants, grant opportunities, volunteerism, getting the community to rally around more volunteerism. It just needs to be really intentional. I mean, it's great to just be at schools, but I think like joining reading warriors, joining, you know, tutoring or book buddy programs or things like that. So I think it's just involvement. I know in some areas, they do back-to-school supply drives and for students that might be in need. And so there's, there's a multitude of ways, and I think it's just connecting with your local schools to figure out how you can help. I know the, I think it's the, it's in Kernersville, the, there's a group, and I can't remember now, the Chamber of Commerce there does a grant program with teachers, and they raise money through local businesses, and then they give teachers like competitive grants, they're like $500 to $1,000 grants, and so teachers can do innovative things in their classrooms. So there, I'm sure, there's countless ways, not all, most don't require money. I think it's time, I think it's energy, I think it's highlighting great things that are happening, like in our schools, because sometimes, you know, one incident can, it can turn into a negative narrative, but there's so much good happening. And I'm focused not on your schools, there's so much good happening in the schools that represent, that Lewisville represents, but across the district as a whole, there's so many great things happening. So I think just sharing, sharing the positive stories, getting involved in the schools, working directly with those principals to figure out what the needs are, would be helpful.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Trish, I know I speak for the council and so many of our residents when I say that we cannot express our gratitude for the job that you all do. Here, right here in Lewisville, annually, your third graders come over and we do a simulated town council meeting and they learn about town government and they have a great time with, I generally try, we generally try to get out to the opening day of your, when your teachers arrive, to give them the pep talk and tell them how much we appreciate them. I think we're engaged on a lot of levels with them, and I'm working with Principal Charles right now because we talked about our community engagement programs with some of their facilities, and I'm hoping that we can get that off the ground next year. So anything that we can do to support you all, we're 100% behind you and know that we, I guess to borrow an old expression, we have your back out here.
Thank you.
Deanna, we all, obviously, we appreciate your role. You've got the political front on all of this, so you take the fire first and foremost before anybody. We've got your back, too. Anything else, council members? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
PJ?
Good evening. Hope everybody's ready for Christmas. Got our Christmas shopping. You can see that we had a little bit more calls for service for November, 801 calls for service, but again, don't let that alarm you because a lot of that's going to be self-initiated activities with security checks. We're starting to see a lot more residents reach out by email when they're going out of town, and that's what we want. 498 security checks, 28 traffic citations, 12 alarms, and about a four, a little over four-minute response times. And you can see those numbers as compared to last year, there is a little bit. I did pull the data for this month with adding the new deputy with the split shift car, and I noticed that this month, we answered a little over 66% of the calls in Lewisville, so left a little over 30% that was handled by zone cars. And you'll, you'll expect to see that with holidays, vacations, and stuff still lingering around, people out sick. So I don't think we'll ever get to the point of 100%, but it is putting a mark in it. And again, I expressed to you that the deputies that are out here that work with us really appreciate the opportunity to have that extra position. So they're, they're very fortunate, and that seems to be working well for them. Don't really have a safety kit for this month, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the parade. There's going to be some traffic in Lewisville, so I would encourage you to try to spread the words, or those that may be watching at home, try to get your shopping and any commuting that you have to do early. We'll try to shut the roads down right around 2:30. Try to encourage everybody to slow down. There's going to be a delay in some traffic. We're going to try to, we'll have deputies stationed at most of the major intersections. We want everybody to have a good time, and that's probably one of the biggest parades in the area. We want to keep everybody safe, so we're working with the fire department to use fire trucks and barricades in addition to deputies. So one thing, just as a reminder, make sure if you can, help with getting that word out that once we, if you're riding on a float, make sure you continue down to make that right off a shallow onto bail net, because what we have, what we've seen in the past is most of that gets bottlenecked right there. And if we start, if we start trying to unload, that backs up the parade. And when we get floats stationary in the roadway, people's going to start coming out to the floats, and it's going to make for a dangerous situation. We certainly don't want to have it where we had it in the incident in Raleigh, so we want to make sure everybody's safe. So I think if, if everybody will just abide by the rules and try to make it smooth, then I think we have a successful parade. I did want to congratulate Bo on his retirement. I appreciate you, Bo, you've always been a friend, and congratulations, and whatever the future holds for you.
Thank you. Any questions for PJ? Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, PJ. I know that we put some more funds in for deputies for the upcoming parade, so... So those will all be stationed, is it twelve total? Is that what you've got out?
We've got twelve total. We stationed some more at the Food Line. Since we can't really shut off Food Line, Loews Foods is going to, you know, they, that takes care of itself where people can access, but Food Line coming in off the interstate, we see that's usually a target area where we get a lot of traffic and up through the Funeral Home where there's not major roads. So we're going to station a couple of those folks into like the vet's office to, just to try to maintain. I know everybody's in a hurry and that's what we run into is as, as Santa passes by, people try to leave. So we'll, we'll have a couple deputies lining the streets and we'll kind of push people out and when the deputies pass by, that's where we know the end of the parade. So we'll try to make it as safe as possible.
Thank you. And then I have one follow up. I know that at some point we had said something about lights or something that there were some lights that we were, you were going to acquire to put outside?
Yeah, we ordered the four lights, the tower lights.
Yes.
I think we used some of those at the Santa or Tree Lane. We've tested some of them out. We got those late in the year, so we may use those. We may have them depending on how, how late we run, but they seem to be working very well.
Okay.
I have to keep a tight guard on them. Every deputy comes in, wants to take them home. Thank you, council for approving that. So that's been a big help and I think we'll see really benefits from it for next summer's events and stuff.
This is for the street crossings, correct? Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
We did, we did a little test and I'll try to, I'll try to put a little video together to show you. So also wanted to make mention that Jane and myself took, we went down to the sheriff's office a few weeks ago and hopefully after Christmas, we'd like to get the council down to look at the new Arctic system that the sheriff has in place for these video cameras. And I think we, there's some real good technology that's out there that I think will be very beneficial for the town to, to look at and the council to look at. It's, the sheriff has really done a good job and shown great leadership in trying to advance and keep up with the technology and try to make it the townships and the county a better place. Try to put that together for you guys.
One quick question.
I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me, Mike. Yes, I know with the new post office, that's federal, so we really aren't informed of that much. You happen to know when they plan to open?
I do not. I know, I know everybody that tries to make a left turn, there's cool traffic codes that it's very quick. They're kind of long, they are working, so I don't know what exact date.
Jane, I'll just make this comment. About a week ago, I happened to ride into the parking lot and not get out and look through the window, but looked through the window from my car, if you will. And they haven't even put any drywall inside the, the actual exterior framed walls yet. So I don't know if it's material shortage or what the holdup is. It looks, it appears that the exterior is complete, but they haven't done anything on the interior at this point in time from, from just a view that I had and all. So with that, it may be months.
Council, anything else?
Yeah, could you remind me at least of what the difference between a security check and an alarm?
A security check is, let's say that for instance, you go out of town and you send an email to us and say, hey, I'm going to be out of town for, for a week. We'll go by and actually do it. Or it may be something as, hey, somebody's seen something that looked a little odd in the neighborhood, a speeding car. We're having trouble with speeders in the neighborhood. A deputy may go out there while he does a report and actually checks out on a security check. Those are pretty much just self initiated versus the alarm is actually a dispatch call.
PJ? Thank you.
Same to you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are at the first opportunity, our public forum, for those who wish to address the council, with those things that are near and dear to your hearts at this time. If there's anybody that wishes to address the council, please come forward, state your name, your address. I see no movement in the public body, so we will pass on. Let me remind you that you can provide written comments and send them to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net and we'll be glad to accept those. Alrighty, we don't have a lot of our traditional items on the agenda, so we're going to move right down to new business. And James, I believe you have the first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twelve A under new business, this is resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero sixty-eight. This is appointment of town attorney firm. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one seventy-three, the council shall appoint a city attorney to serve at its pleasure and be its legal advisor. With the impending retirement of Mr. Bo Huff at the end of December, it is time for the town council to consider a successor. I offer for your consideration the candidacy of Mr. Elliot A. Fuss, who is here with us this evening. Elliot Fuss is a shareholder at the same law firm as Bo, Lanko Tackeberry, and Elliot is the leader of the firm's litigation practice group. Mr. Fuss earned his bachelor's degree from UNC Chapel Hill in nineteen ninety-one and his law degree from Wake Forest University in nineteen ninety-seven. Elliot was admitted to the North Carolina Bar twenty-five years ago and he is a member of the federal, state, and county bar associations. His legal practice focuses on municipal law and civil litigation and he has served as the attorney for multiple towns in North Carolina. Elliot is an experienced litigator and he has also served as a lecturer and author on various legal topics. In addition, he gives his time to civic and professional organizations ranging from the Forsyth County Bar Association to the Rotary Club. I am pleased to recommend for the council's consideration, the appointment of Elliot Fuss as town attorney. Thank you.
Council members, any questions?
Yes, if we don't approve this tonight, Bo has to stay out, right?
That's true.
I just want to make clear about that stuff.
Nobody wants that. If there were questions, we'll entertain a motion to accept the manager's recommendation for, to appoint Elliot Foss as our new town attorney.
No, sir.
Effective January one.
Second.
I believe Ms. Foster made the motion, Mr. Smithman made the second. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Bo, any comments you want to make about Elliot? You've worked with him for a while.
Well, you will definitely see an, an increase in the, in the value of the legal services that you receive from Elliot. He and I have worked together since two thousand and nine. We had one little skirmish before he was with our firm, a long, long time ago. He's very experienced, a very good person. I know that you will enjoy working with Elliot just as much as I have enjoyed working with him and I know that he will enjoy working with you because I can't tell you enough, I can't tell Elliot, I can't tell the citizens enough good things about the various councils that I've had the joy of working with over this, these past thirty years or so. And, and I know that the council would say the same about its citizens and the staff has just been wonderful and supportive. We haven't always had easy things to do, but for the most part, we have. But even when we've had difficult things to do, we've had the ability to work with them and through them together in a way that's just been, it's just been wonderful, wonderful for me. I'm a citizen of this town, I love this town, have had a lot of clients over the, over the many years I've been in practice and I can say without hesitation that Lewisville is my favorite beloved client and I'll be watching you guys.
Elliot, can we anticipate that you will drop in on your way home like Bo does many times, just to catch up and chew the fat some?
We'll see how that goes.
Any comments you want to make, Elliot?
I just look forward to carrying on and with Bo's work here, it'll be hard to fill his shoes, but I really look forward to it.
Very good, Elliot. Thank, we have a big year planned, so welcome aboard. It's going to be, it's going to be a good time, so buckle up. Alrighty, Stacy, you have a public hearing that we need to set.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to try to speak as loudly as I can. I don't know how good this mic is, is picking up for Channel Six and on Facebook, but tonight before you is resolution two zero two two zero six nine. This is a resolution to set a public hearing for case L one zero four for a site plan amendment and amendment of uses for properties located at seven seven one Williams Road. What we requested is that the zoning for the property is actually not changing. It's currently zoned highway business, conditional zoning, and that is staying. However, they are requesting a change to the site plan that you have been able to see in your packet and also a change of uses. The uses they're requesting is professional office, restaurant without drive-through service, micro brewery or micro distilleries, general merchandising store and school, and vocational or professional of the school. So again, tonight I come before you just to set that public hearing for the January regular meeting of the town council and I will be briefing you guys on that particular request at the January briefing and then also have presentations before you at the regular January meeting for this public hearing.
Any questions for Stacy? What is the date on that January meeting?
Twelfth.
The twelfth?
Twelfth.
Thank you. If I didn't cover up my screen here, I could have seen that. Council members, any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for this item on January twelfth.
So moved.
Makes motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is your answer. You have a little ordinance for us to give away some money?
Pull it up real quick. This is ordinance two zero two two dash zero six six, amending budget ordinance two zero two two dash zero zero one. This is to approve a budget amendment for a thousand dollars to fund the Earth Day event to be held in Schallford Square.
Very good, council members. We were briefed on this last week, presentation from our Sustainability Conservation and
Environmental.
Environmental Committee.
ECSC.
ECSC, thank you. If there are no questions, entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is approved. Alrighty, James, upcoming events?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's always fun to share information about upcoming holidays and events and we've heard a little bit earlier about December eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the Christmas Parade. This is sponsored by the Lewisville Civic Club and the parade starts at three o'clock PM for those viewing the parade, but I think our town clerk may be letting folks know who are participating in the parade, they may have to get there a bit earlier. On December sixteenth, we're having the Holiday Open House and this is going to be at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center from four o'clock to eight o'clock PM. From December twenty-first through the thirtieth, the cardboard recycling program is still going, will be going on at the Lewisville Elementary School. And then the Christmas holiday comes up and we'll have two days off, Friday, the twenty-third of December and Monday, the twenty-sixth, so the offices, town hall will be closed. And the New Year's holiday follows a week later, so on January second, twenty twenty-three, the offices and town hall will be closed. And then later in January, for the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, January sixteenth, town hall and offices will be closed as well. Thank you.
Very good. James, anything else for us and your manager aside?
No, sir.
Outstanding, very good. Dora, you have a little more on the parade.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder that the council needs to meet at the Animal Hospital of Lewisville at two thirty PM. They will line you up individually before placing you on the float. They're having to park the float across the street due to the size. So they're just requesting that you arrive by two thirty and have fun.
Looks like rain is going to stop and we'll hopefully have a little sunshine. Ladies and gentlemen, as we mentioned earlier, we have a briefing the first Thursday of every month. During that time, we find on occasion, we need to take some actions. We like to report those actions out at this meeting, so it's a matter of record during our regularly meeting. James, will you please report out those, those activities?
And this is item thirteen G on the agenda and these are those approvals that the mayor mentioned and we have, the first batch of them are related to the Gateway Project and the supplemental funding we received for that project. G one, that's ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six four, that was to amend the Gateway Project capital project ordinance for a value of two million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand and eighty dollars. Tied into that was ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six five, that was to amend the budget ordinance for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. That way we could transfer to the Gateway Project Capital Projects Fund an amount of three million, three hundred thousand. The third item related to this project was resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven zero, that was the Gateway Project Construction Contract with Branch Civil and that contract value, two point eight four eight million, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Next up were the engineering services related to this construction project and resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven one would authorize construction, engineering, and inspection services contract for the Gateway Project with Kimley Horn. And the last item related to this project was resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven two. This was an amendment to the preliminary design contract for the Gateway Project with Kimley Horn and that value was twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ten cents. Now, the last item you'll see under G six, this was for a different project. It was a letter of support from the town of Lewisville for a CMAC or Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Grant and that grant funding request was for an extension of Schallford Road sidewalks. Total value potential for that grant funded project is one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And that, Mr. Mayor, concludes the, the items that were approved at the last meeting.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at the second opportunity for public comments. I do want to recognize Mrs. Joyce Walker, who happens to make the long, long drive out tonight to be with us. Joyce, you know, you're always welcome. It's good to see you. Anyone wish to make a comment to the council at this time? Again, you can send your comments to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. This is a, this is kind of a, a very sad function or a sad activity for me, but Bo...
I don't see this on the agenda.
I'd like to meet you out here if I could, please.
Hello, hello? Hey, I know we've, we've been working together for a long time, just not connected with it. It's a long time. Your amazing contributions to the town, we're maybe not recognized by some, but certainly will be remembered by many, many of us. You've got a great friend, you've got a wonderful council. Your activities, is this on for you? I don't know. Do you?
I think it doesn't sound like it. There's something else out with that. Yeah. Yeah, it is. Yep.
Thank you. So we're going to be crouching tigers here by this microphone? Bo, I'll just, I'll just kind of recap. You're, you're, you're a great friend. You've been a great friend of the town. We're going to miss you a lot, but the council would like to present you with a plaque for your appreciation and I'd like to read it if I could. "With grateful appreciation for his service as town attorney from nineteen ninety-four to twenty twenty-two, the Lewisville Town Council recognized Mo and C. Bo Huff for his wise counsel, extraordinary community support, profound leadership, I'm sorry, profound friendship, and the many contributions he has made to help Lewisville distinguish itself as one of the most outstanding towns in North Carolina, presented by the Lewisville Town Council on December eighth, twenty twenty-two." I'm prolonging this because I really don't want to say goodbye in this, in this, this moment, but I know you're not going to be a stranger. You're going to be by, you just live down the road, we know where you live and you know our doors are always open. I hope to see you. You also have a presentation to make.
Oh, well, this is from, from all your council and also your team. It's a little more than a card, so we all wrote our special comments for you in a special journal that says, retired lawyer, not my problem anymore. So we'll pass this on to you. Thank you, Bo. We so appreciate you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a short break here. We've got some celebratory punch and cake that we're going to share with our town attorney and with staff and with our folks in the audience. When we come back from that... When we come back from that, we will be going into closed session. We don't anticipate taking any actions. When we come out of that closed session, we'll, the only action we'll take is to adjourn the meeting. So if you want to stick with us, the, the cake and punch will be edited out, so when we come back again, it'll be just like we left a moment ago. So with that, let's take a momentary break and, and celebrate the tenure of Bo Huff.